Good evening everyone, it is six o'clock and this is the meeting of the Ontario Board of Education for February 7th. We have a tobacco policy in place, there is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. District Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Sherry?
Present.
Trustee Bishop?
Present.
Trustee Storey?
Here.
Trustee Wallace?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Taylor?
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person and OAA negotiations. May I have first please? Trustee Storey, second, Trustee Bishop. Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, we'll be back in about forty-five minutes.
IT takes such good care of me. So as it's warming up, there we go. So this is the start of our budget season. As I mentioned at the last meeting, it's really for me a year-round process. I like to get you guys involved as soon as possible. I will start with there is a lot of information. There's some kind of background information because I know we do have some new board members. Don't get scared. Don't say, oh my God, I'm never going to get this. I usually repeat myself at every meeting so by the time budget season's over, you'll be an expert. So the first thing we start with is the tax levy. So the tax levy cap is due to the state by March 1st. So I will start with it is not a 2% tax cap. It is a formula of which 2% is one number of the formula. So when looking at our tax cap limit for this year or for this coming year, we are looking at about a 3.5% tax levy increase. That is the tax cap. That is the most that we can levy as a district without requiring a 60% supermajority. We've had some of our curriculum work, our maps testing, which was completed by all of our students. These are our assessments to really help us monitor our students' growth about three times a year. We did have a run, test run with our computer-based testing for the state with our third graders and that went with ease. Our third graders got to celebrate the Chinese New Year. One of our students' families came in to help us celebrate that. Being at, our student was actually born in China, so that was very exciting. They enjoyed crafts, stories, and some homemade food to celebrate and we learned about the Year of the Rabbit. And this is one of the most important holidays for, in China and for the Chinese communities around the world. Many of our classrooms have participated in Senator Lynch's Third Annual Valentine's for Seniors Drive. Last year, they distributed more than 4,000 handmade Valentines made by our local students to seniors across the district. And our students helped this year to give our residents of our local nursing homes a reminder that we're thinking of them on Valentine's Day. Around the building again, science detectives is back. We share Mr. Savachi and we're on our next five-week cycle. They, they are here, Mr. and Mrs. Savachi work with about 12 of our students each time it changes on science and they, I believe, had a bear rug of some sort in today. I didn't question. We are welcoming back just this week the PTA's Project of Cool School, which is organized and totally run by our PTA. The after-school program is offering Varga artists with artist, local artist Christina Varga, Kids in Clay with Doug and Pam Pelzman, Kids in the Kitchen with our own chef Christina, who runs our PTA, Lego builders and Cool School hoops. These are going to be run every Wednesday for the next four Wednesdays for about an hour after school. We're also welcoming back our Valentine's Day Bash, also run by our PTA, so we're welcoming back our Valentine's Dance. It will be open for all of our Phoenisha students and their families. And there'll be dancing treats, a light show, a photo booth, and so lots of fun. Mr. Halleck's third-grade class has been working on some robotics projects with one of our parents, Shane Haas. They have been building a Lego robot named Milo and not only building it and then really programming it to go around their classroom, it's just so much fun to see them literally down on the ground checking this out and it's their work. So, they're going to continue a few Friday, couple of Friday afternoons they were working on that. Oh, my goodness, our first graders received their first round of pen pal letters from the students in the National Honor Society from here in Ontario. Each first grader will receive their own letter from a member of the Honor Society and now have written back to their pen pals. So, each, they plan to continue their, their pen pal adventures throughout the rest of the school year. Upcoming adventures, our second grade is already planning a trip to the Ashokin Center to explore some outdoor education opportunities. Our third grade just next week is going on a trip to SUNY New Falls to see their planetarium. And there's going to be lots more to come as the spring. And teachers continue to work hard every day and have been participating in professional development in reading, math, technology integration, social emotional learning, and as we're getting ready to prepare for our next superintendent's conference day. And as always, we thank you for your dedication to our students and our schools and have a fantastic evening. Welcome again to Phoenisha.
Thank you so much, Principal Fallow. Does anyone have questions? Well, it sounds like there is a lot going on here and it's all fantastic. Thank you so much for having us. Before we, before we get to item 4.01, we're just going to switch things up a bit and ask Noel Crandell, the student representative, to give us her report.
Thank you. Hello. Recently, in the high school student government, we are eager to start the process of implementing the condom initiative. We are getting a new updated invoice from Victoria Gardens for our courtyard and we have an association meeting on Thursday. There isn't much to report on throughout the high school as many students are still settling back down from their first midterm and region's week in quite a while. But recently, many varsity sports teams are holding their senior nights, congrats to seniors. French Club has announced they will be hosting a talent show in March. Many clubs are doing Valentine's Day fundraisers, selling things such as bracelets and poems. Every skier on Ontario's ski team made sections, which will be held on February 15th at Hunter Mountain. And the members of the National Honor Society are also very excited about the pen palting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel, and feel free to head home if you'd like. We appreciate you coming tonight. Item 4.01, the Assistant Superintendent for Business Monica Leclaire will present the rollover budget and budget assumption.
IT takes such good care of me. So, as it's warming up, there we go. So, this is the start of our budget season. As I mentioned at the last meeting, it's really for me a year-round process. I, you know, like to get you guys involved as soon as possible. I will start with, there is a lot of information. There's some kind of background information because I know we do have some new board members. Don't get scared, don't say, "Oh, my God, I'm never going to get this." I usually repeat myself at every meeting, so by the time budget season's over, you'll be an expert. So, the first thing we start with is the tax levy. So, the tax levy cap is due to the state by March 1st. So, I will start with, it is not a 2% tax cap. It is a formula, of which 2% is one number of the formula. So, when looking at our tax cap limit for this year, or for this coming year, we are looking at about a 3.5% tax levy increase. That is the tax cap. That is the most that we can levy as a district without requiring a 60% supermajority by the voters. Now, we don't have to go to that. That is just what we will tell the state, that is our max. We can tell the state much later down the line what we actually plan on levying. I like to kind of share the historical rate versus levy. There's a lot of misconception when people say, "Oh, you're, you know, my levy is going up 3.5%. That means my taxes are going up 3.5%." That is not the case. The tax levy is the amount that we collect. The tax rate is the amount that is placed on the tax bills. So, as you can see historically, our levies have gone up, in some cases as much as almost 3% in 2018, 19, even though our levy went up almost 3%, the tax rate went up just shy of half a percent. So, and a lot of that has to do because we have growth. So, we might be taxing $3 billion worth of property one year, $3.5 billion worth of property the next year. So, when you have growth, it's taking into account that you have more entities to tax than you did the previous year. And then I also like to show every year the fact that we are the lowest in the county for tax rate per thousand dollar of assessment compared to the other schools in our county. As you can see, Rondau, well, actually, now Sarkis is a little lower this year than, than even Rondau. Rondau has always been kind of pretty close to us. So, just some definitions. Now, all of this stuff is also on the district website. If you, you know, get bored, go to the business part of the website under taxes. So, these are all the things that make up your tax bill. So, I can kind of go back and forth a little bit. So, we start with the tax levy. Tax levy, ooh, do I have a, don't have a pointer on here, do I? So, tax levy is at the bottom at 46 million. So, this is an example of this year's tax bill. Jane and John Doe. So, that's the 46 million. That's the tax levy. That's the total amount that we'll be, we collect this year. The tax rate is then determined based on the tax levy and the assessment and then the equalization rate. I think you've all heard me talk about the equalization rate. So, the tax rate is at $11.95. Then we look at the assessment. What is the assessed value? Who determines the assessed value? That comes from the town. We have no control over the assessed value. So, the assessed value in this case is $264,300. But what you'll also see in that little box in there, it says the full market value of this property as of March 1st was $345,942. So, they had an equalization rate of 76.4%. I'll tell you, this was the town of Hurley. Woodstock was 61%. So, what it's saying is, is that even though you're assessed at 264,000, your house is actually worth 345,000. So, we're, so they're taxing you on the 345 because if they didn't, then a house that was assessed at 264 in Olive that was only worth 264 in Olive would be paying more than this house and this house is worth more. So, it's the office of real property. It's a way, equalization is a way for them to equalize the tax when you have more than one town in your school district and we have six. So, that's the equalization rate. At this time, the only town that has an equalization rate of 100% is the town of Olive. So, the effect of the assessment and the equalization rate and why this has become a bit, much bigger deal this year is, as you can see on the right side for 22, 23, our equalization rates, with the exception of Olive, are all below 100%. So, in the middle column where it says fair market value is 200,000 for last year, fair market value 200,000, but then if you look at that first column, what it was actually assessed at was less, but it was worth $200,000. So, that's why everybody has a different tax rate because you're taxed on the assessed value, not the fair market value. But if you look at the taxes, based on your fair market value, everybody paid the exact same amount of taxes. So, if you had a house that was valued at 200,000, you paid the same taxes as a house in every town in this district. So, the interesting thing to note is for the current year, you actually paid less taxes. Now, in many instances, Woodstock's a prime example, your house was worth a lot more. So, it may have seemed like you were paying more, but your house is worth more. So, this, this is really why towns need to do a revale because what, what the ORPS is saying is every house in the town of Woodstock is 61% higher value than it does, but of course, it's not true. But they can't say, "Okay, this house is worth more, but that one isn't." It can only do a blanket increase. So, that's why once you get to equalization rates like this, you really need to do a revale. I know that they've, I think all of them have talked about it, with the exception of Shan Daken. So, hopefully, we'll, you know, we'll see what happens this year. So, that's tax levy 101. So, our initial overall projections for revenue, I mentioned the tax levy right now, the cap is at that almost 3.5%. State aid, so state aid, our projected budget, we did get the governor's budget, is around 10.3 million. So, a little less than what Don budgeted last year within, you know, 1.8%. Miscellaneous, that's our BOSI's refund, interest income, foster care billing, things like that. So, we are looking right now at an initial projected revenue increase of just shy of 2.5%, so 1.4 million. So, Valerie made the comment that maybe we should talk about state aid a little bit. So, I'll try to go through this. As I said, don't think you need to be an expert by the time this is over. I still don't understand half this stuff. So, the amount of state aid that we receive is driven by specific factors that the state gives schools. So, they're part, if you, actually, I think I downloaded, I attached on the, on, on board docs, some of the backup, so if you really wanted to kind of get into state aid. The most important factor, the one I think is the most important, is what's called our combined wealth ratio. So, the state says there's an average, one is average. If your combined wealth ration or the combined wealth ratio is your income wealth and your property wealth. It's 50/50. 50% of income, 50% of property. As you can see, ours for this current year, these are 22, 23 factors, is 2.167. So, we are more than double as wealthy as other school districts. Our total wealth pupil unit, which is another very important measure of wealth, New York State average is 779,000, we're at 2.2 million. We are more than, almost 300% higher than the state average and we are more than double the next highest school in Ulster County, which is Rondau at about a million. So, what the total wealth pupil units is, is the assessment in your district divided by the number of your students. So, because we are such a large district with so few students, we have $5 billion worth of taxable property over 1,100 kids. So, the approved operating expenses per pupil is also very high. It's 26,000 for Ontario over the, compared to the state average of 16.6. Our WADA, our resident weighted average daily attendance, is zero, which means there are certain pots of money that we don't get any aid for because we have an R-WAD of zero. That again, has to do with our wealth. And then TAFPU, Total Adeable Foundation Units, and that's just a handful of, of fun acronyms that the state has. So, as far as what makes up state aid, foundation aid is the largest piece. So, foundation aid is a formula that started in 2007. It combined a bunch of different aid categories that existed prior to that. It was kind of when I first got into the whole school business stuff. Thank you, Victoria. So, they, they froze the foundation formula at one point. Had it continued to run the way it was supposed to because it's supposed to be based on need and enrollment, we are actually, Ontario is overfunded for foundation aid. We're a handful, I think there's maybe a quarter of the schools that are overfunded, half of them, less than half, like half about what they need, and then there's a quarter that are underfunded. So, what they did say though is because we have obviously relied on this money, they are not taking it back. We're in what they call a hold harmless situation. We'll see how long it lasts. High tax aid was something that came in in the early 2000s. It's been frozen since 2009, 10, and it basically says, because your residents pay a higher percentage of taxes than other schools, we're here, we're going to just give you money. So, they've been giving this to 715,000 since 2009, 10. We hope they don't take it away. The hardware technology aid, we're not eligible for, as I mentioned, that's based on our WADA and since our WADA is zero, anything times zero is still zero. We do however, get software, library, and textbook aid. It's based on our 21, 22 expenses and it's also based on pupil count, understanding that for textbooks, it also includes private schools. So, private schools are eligible for that $43.25 per student. So, oh, hold on, get back. So, these are non-expense-driven aids. These are aids you get no matter how much money you spend. The other type of state aid is what we call expense-driven aids. And that is, if you spend a certain amount of money, we will give you a certain percentage of that money back in aid. So, this is the part that gets difficult. So, the 23, 24 budgeted aid, what the governor gave us in our aid runs, is based on the current 22, 23 budget. Now, 22, 23 isn't over yet. So, our actual 23, 24 aid is based on our actual 22, 23 expenses. So, that's where it gets difficult. The governor says, "Okay, you said you were going to spend this, so we're planning on giving you aid on this." However, we generally don't overspend our budget, kind of illegal. So, in the end, we never quite get all that aid that they say we're going to get because we never quite spend all the money that our budget says we are going to spend. So, I'm always, so if you look at it sometimes and you're like, "Well, I mean, state aid said this, you only budgeted this," you have to budget conservatively because you don't always get what you're supposed to, what they say you are. So, examples of our expense-driven aid, building aid is obviously a big one. We get 31%, one of the lowest in the state. It's, it's based on approved capital project expenditures. So, it's not everything in a project. It's what this, what facilities planning approved. And it also does not include repairs, which I think is a mistake. Transportation aid, 9.4%. We spend millions of dollars worth for, with first student, we get 9.4%. BOSI's aid, we get 38%, which is, as you can tell, it ranges from 36 to 90. We're kind of at the bottom. Again, it's also based on approved BOSI's costs and BOSI's aid is capped for salaries at $30,000. So, if we, if we have a content specialist come in that costs us, costs BOSI's $80,000, we get aid on the first 30. We're paying for all 80, but we don't get aid on that 50,000. The other thing is, so excess cost aid, those are our, our special education students. So, we get 25% for public, 67.5% for private. However, we only get aid over everything above our basic contribution. And because we have, we have high student costs, our basic contribution is 41,000. So, if we spent $100,000 on a student in private placement, take the first 41,000 off, we get 60%, 7% of the difference between those two numbers. If they're in BOSI's, BOSI's is considered public, so we only get 25%. We have the highest basic contribution in the county and I thought it was interesting that we're actually, out of 700 schools, we're number 24 in the state. Most of the schools that are higher than us, most of them are in Long Island. I just thought that was interesting. So, looking at our initial projected expenses as, as I said in the beginning, this is a rollover. So, basically, what I do is if we kept everything the same, in addition to some additions that people are looking for, equipment, repairs, things like that, this is what we are looking for, for as far as a 23, 24 budget. It's about a little over 4%, almost $2.5 million increase. As you can see, you know, general support, 13.5, operations and maintenance, 5. I'll go through a little kind of what's in all of these. Transportation, a little over 7, and employee benefits. I'm sure nobody's surprised by that. So, kind of as a summary, so salary and benefits makes up about 75% of our budget. That is very common. Every school has about 75%. Again, we're a people-based business. So, salary, we look at the expenses, it's based on the current contracts. We don't have any contracts that have expired, so that makes it a little easier for next year. Well, okay, we have one. The hard ones aren't expired next year, let's say that. We have 220 instructional staff. We have 96 non-instructional staff. This salary does not include substitutes or coaches. Benefits at 19 million, so 31% of our budget. Again, it's based on contracts. The interesting thing to note is we have 247 active employees currently taking our insurance. We have 306 retirees that are currently taking our health insurance. And we also reimburse for Medicare Part B as part of the contract. Some of the other things that we have, supplies, materials, equipment, contracts, contracts such as our BOSI's contract, our first student contract, so we do have a pretty large percentage. The, the thing that makes it different for, for schools really is if you have your own transportation department or if you contract transportation. If you have your own transportation department, you're more like 80% salary benefits. If you contract at, that's when it's usually more like 75%. So, the big budget drivers for next year right now is obviously the contractual increases, the OTA contract, the Antia contract. I will tell you, one issue I found in looking at the Antia salaries is that they were not properly budgeted for this year. The, the Antia contract, I believe, was ratified, I don't know if it was after the budget, it was after, it was after the salaries were budgeted. Let me put it that way. I don't know exactly when. Unfortunately, it was only budgeted for a 2.5% increase. They got a 5% increase plus they got step. So, in many instances, it's between 6 and 8%. So, for next year, I had to budget what this year should have been and then add what they got next year. So, hence the reason why that's a little higher. We also have increased BOSI's debt payment. BOSI's is doing a capital project. This current year, the BOSI's debt payment is about 180,000. Next year, it's going up to 468,000. Health insurance, I budgeted 9%. The more people I talk to, I'm a little concerned that maybe it was, didn't budget enough. Unfortunately, the, so our health insurance through DEHIC goes from July 1 to June 30. The other state plan that's out there, NYSIP, which is also a Blue Cross Blue Shield product, is a July to December plan. A lot of state agencies have it, a few schools have it too. They went up 14%. So, I'm hopeful that DEHIC has fund balance, that they won't let it go that high. I will absolutely put in my two cents with them. Obviously, we have larger, large increases in utility and supply costs due to the supply chain, due to energy costs. I don't have to tell that, tell you that. And we're also looking at some increase in private special ed placements that get, they get expensive. Software purchases, you know, we obviously are doing a lot more with our, with our computers. We, our software purchases have gone up. And we're also looking at some, some equipment purchases. Nicole desperately needs buses. Unfortunately, we aren't there yet where we can purchase electric buses and because of our weather, our big buses, we have two right now that will not pass DOT at the end of this year. So, that is an absolute, we don't have a choice. Kyle needs to replace one of his pickup trucks. He has a replacement plan where, you know, he knows every year, so it's, we have one in this year's budget, so that's really not an increase. That's kind of a, you know, rollover. I did have a very nice conversation with Beth and said, "What do you need for equipment?" Because it seems like every year, it's September and they're like, "Oh, well, we need this, we need that," but you didn't budget for it. So, she has a little, slightly higher budget than probably previous athletic directors. But I have to say that, that in previous years, it was never asked for. And I'm like, "Well, we don't know what you, we don't know what we don't know and we don't know what you need." So, we did put wrestling mats in here, thinner ones, lighter ones, because our custodial workers are having a hard time carrying them and the kids are having a hard time carrying them. And then a pole vault mat, which unfortunately is $35,000 because it has to be a special size. Nothing's cheap anymore. So, some of the highlights of the budget, we're going to continue our replacement of technology. We're continuing the active learning space, space initiative. We're continuing our summer school funding to address all the, you know, our academic supports, continuing after-school homework, all of the extracurricular opportunities. Stephanie has brought in the multi-tiered system of supports, Stephanie and Amanda. We have multisensory reading and math training for the staff. We're implementing, the implementation of the MTSS, that's the Multi-Tierred System of Support, a data system to support the student growth. We're going to, we continue with the professional learning in math and literacy. We have content specialists coming in. We are using BOSI's technology instructional staff. And then we are continuing the increased funding for the mental health support. Understanding that at this point, some of this is also coming from ARP, but I will also remind you, we have one more year of ARP. So, that's really when the So that's really when the, I mean, I, I think we're, we're at a point where, with a lot of schools, you know, they were very mindful, they want to consider this, they have the grant money. The problem with grant money, when you use it especially for salaries, you, you hit what they call a financial cliff. The money's gone, your tax cap can't support keep continuing it, so that's when the tough decisions really have to get made.
Can you please explain what ARP is?
Oh, I'm sorry. We've had it for so long. It's the American Rescue Plan. It was the COVID money that, that schools received. So we received two, well, technically, three pots of money. The initial pot was during COVID. We then received CHRISA, which was the, oh, I can't remember. It was a really long one acronym, which was initial pot, it was a smaller pot of money, that one expires this year. And then we were given a larger pot of money, and that one will expire next year. So the areas of uncertainty that still exist, health insurance rates, as I mentioned, state aid, we got the governor's budget, we still have to wait for the legislative budget, special ed needs, IEPs are still happening. And then our faculty-staff retirements, teachers have until March first. If they are interested in the retirement incentive, to let us know if they are interested in retiring. So at this point, we are looking at a projected difference between revenues and expenditures of approximately three point eight million dollars. For example, this year, we had a difference of two point seven, and we used appropriated fund balance. So for those that don't know, appropriated fund balance is basically, it's a planned deficit. We think we're going to get fifty-seven in revenue, we think we're going to spend fifty-nine in expenses. We got two point seven sitting in the bank that we can pull from to support those expenses if we need it. Historically, we've used between two point nine and three point two. I'm sorry, two point seven and three point two. Again, it's a planned deficit that we have not thankfully had to use, but we always plan for it. So in the next few board meetings, what I want to bring to you is what we're looking to do for potential capital work. So if we're looking to do another proposition on the ballot, it needs to be, it needs to be agreed upon by the board, resolution needs to be passed before the first notice gets put into the paper, which is April first, I believe. So within the next, so by the, by the last March board meeting, if we want to look at doing a proposition for a capital reserve, we would need to have it approved by the board by the end of, by the last meeting in March. So these are some of the things that I had spoken with Kyle about, the administrators. So in our general fund budget, we have what we call a transfer to capital. It's part of our regular budget, but we use money for kind of smaller, short-term, immediate projects. The thought was, knowing that the sixth graders are coming up in September of twenty-four, using that funding and allocating it specifically for the middle school to help integrate the sixth grade into the middle school. We're talking potentially doors, we're talking, you know, maybe moving offices. So this money would be specifically for that. We've also been in, having conversations both with Kyle and with Beth. So we have an eight million dollar capital reserve right now. Let's use some of that money. Again, it would require a proposition to the voters, the voters would have to approve it. We would use that money, we would upgrade the middle school gym. We would, we need to put a new transformer in the high school because we do not have enough outlets back by the science classrooms. Replace the roof over science and guidance, we have to fix it in the spring because it's leaking. Pass this so we can, as I said, we want, if we want aid, it's got to be a capital project. Otherwise, we'd spend seventy-five thousand dollars and get nothing. Paving at the middle school, this would also, would also be redoing the tennis court. And then phase three of the high school renovation project, which was eight classrooms, this was kind of part of the, the conversation from two years ago, I think even. We had phase one, two, and three, so it's phase two is happening this summer. Phase three would be next summer, and it has eight classrooms, it would do the family and consumer science room as well. And then the other thought was creating another reserve. So the reserve that currently exists is a reserve that's funding for up to ten million dollars. Once we hit that ten million dollar mark, we can't fund it anymore. By opening up a new capital reserve, we can now start saving money and putting it aside to address the building needs for the long-term plan. This will then reduce our reliance on debt. And we wouldn't have to raise as much, we wouldn't have to raise as much money from, or borrow as much money, I'm sorry, to do any, any potential projects. And then I have the electric bus infrastructure with question marks because we still don't have any answers. But believe me, as soon as we have them, I will let you know. And I believe that is it. Yep, because it won't let me go any farther. Were there any other questions?
Just a little.
Thank you. Just on that last point, is the timeline still the same or, it might be?
The timeline for the electric buses?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Still the same. I did have a conversation with First Student. They, they said they will get us everything that we need to purchase electric buses by April fifteenth. Don't know what we're going to do with them yet.
I understand. Okay, I just wanted to better understand.
But we'll have buses.
We have them, okay.
Does anyone else have questions for Assistant Superintendent Leclerc? Thank you, as always, Assistant Superintendent, for your very thorough budget work. It's much appreciated and truly appreciate all the time you took to make sure that new trustees have the information that they need to start this process.
You're very welcome. And as I always say, my door is always open. If you, you know, want to come in and ask questions and just kind of get a better understanding because it is, it is not an easy thing to understand. Okay, thanks.
Okay, item five point zero one, the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. May I have a first, please? Trustee Wallace, second. Trustee Story, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. And item seven point zero one, Superintendent District News.
Good evening. I'm going to try and speak directly into my microphone because we got feedback that we were not well-heard at our last meeting. So first, I wanted to share that I believe that at the next meeting, we will have a draft calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year for the board to contemplate. We did share it with all of our unions for their feedback. I know that we heard back from the Teachers Association and they had double-checked and had no issues, so we're waiting to hear from the others. And I think we still are up in the air. Principal Edelman is working with his team to figure out what to do with graduation because the calendar, the region's schedule for next year ends on Wednesday. And so the, the discussion surrounds whether to try and have graduation on Wednesday night versus the traditional Friday night. So I'm sure that he'll have a good recommendation soon. In Central, we were very, very honored to sit through a presentation from our Bennett Student Government on their initiative for recycling plastic film and the Trex Challenge. It was really well-done and our students are just really incredible. They did a wonderful presentation, they had slides, they had handouts, they had videos, they asked us questions. They are very accomplished young people. I hope people saw, we had a Facebook post that we put together trying to identify some resources for our families for emergency childcare and for ongoing childcare. I connected with former trustee DeJesus at the comptroller's office. And she provided us with some resources that we had our BOSI's community relations person put together into a post to try and assist our families. Since our last meeting, I feel, we've sent out information to all of our parents regarding the option of going to a remote learning day versus a snow day in hopes that we can save spring break, but that has the caveat that if there are widespread power outages, we would not be able to do that because that would provide a situation that was not equitable. And so we would revert to a snow day if that were the case. And lastly, and Ms. Leclerc can add to this if necessary, but we were told that we were officially approved by NYSERTA for our application for the electric bus infrastructure assessment. So that's a study that they're going to help us do.
So that was the contract that you guys approved a couple of meetings ago? That said, it might cost this, but we're looking for a grant, so it should only cost that, so it's only going to cost that.
So good news.
Thank you, Superintendent. Does anyone have questions for the Superintendent? No? Okay, does the board have any district news? Trustee Story?
Over the last couple of weeks, I've had the option of going down to Career and Tech. And the auto shop has been, had turned around and put tires on my car and aligned it. And it's just great to witness our students that are working on these things and they're getting the hands-on experience that this is what Career and Tech education is. And it's just, it's wonderful to see them be able to do this stuff.
That is pretty awesome. And you had said earlier that you provide the materials and then they do the work? That's great, and I'm glad you took advantage of that. Does anybody else have district news? And item point zero two, the Ad-Hoc Committee, trustee Bishop, trustee Story, trustee Raimondo. I believe the trustee Bishop is going to report.
Okay, my report is a little long tonight because we've had a few meetings. The Ad-Hoc Committee met on January twenty-fifth for about two hours to review the World Cafe process and debrief on feedback that we received at the January twenty-fourth board meeting. We also considered suggestions that were made by board trustees after the January, after the January twenty-fifth Ad-Hoc Committee update and have made some decisions for enhancing community outreach. We agreed that we would also send an email communication each, after each one of our meetings, so trustees who are not on the Ad-Hoc Committee have a better understanding and a more timely understanding of what's going on. In attendance at that meeting were myself, trustee Story, Monica Leclerc, trustee Raimondo, Stephanie Laffin, Amanda Allison, and Superintendent McLaren. I always mess your name up, I don't know why. I just want to call you Victoria, I don't know. Okay, so at that January twenty-fifth meeting, we discussed the following. How can we increase community engagement in the law, in the long-term planning process? We discussed sending out a survey in coordination with the Communications Committee. The goal is to gather feedback around community preference on the different restructuring options. And informational postcards will be mailed sometime next week. The survey will be open for responses from community members for two weeks. Survey questions will include, and this is not verbatim, but what K-five configuration would be your choice using the options in Dr. Bachman's report? Why is this your choice? If a school building is closed, what other uses would the community like to see for the school building? And how would community members like to be informed about ongoing action and planning around our, our long-term plan going forward? Oops. Hang on. We also discussed that, the fact that during annual budget presentations to the town boards, we will include information on long-term planning options and our process and commit to ongoing and annual communication with, with town boards about where the district is in long-term planning. And as always, in, in previous years, board trustees and administrators will be invited to co-present to the town boards. A virtual community forum, open to all community members, outlining all current feedback around long-term planning, including community survey results, World Cafes, and district-wide shared decision-making team feedback will be held via Zoom on March thirtieth. The Ad-Hoc Committee will present to the Board of Ed on April eleventh all feedback and conclusions, including that from the March thirtieth virtual forum. Before we adjourned our meeting on January twenty-fifth, we also contacted trustee Lynch and trustee Wallace to arrange for a meeting with the Communications Committee on Monday, January thirtieth. The Communications Committee, oh, I wrote this prior to, we actually did meet, I was just saying that we will meet on Monday. We did meet on Monday, February first. And further, the Ad-Hoc Committee met again yesterday, February sixth, for two hours to review the feedback we received at our first World Cafe held on January thirty-first and to plan for our virtual World Cafe on February twenty-eighth via Zoom. The same exact committee was in attendance. We also discussed planning for the, for the mass mailing, which will go out sometime next week, and, and implementation of our community-wide survey, which was developed in collaboration with the Board of Ed Communications Committee. While community members who were not assigned to table teams at the World Cafe were able to observe the process on January thirty-first in person, this will not be possible during the February twenty-eighth virtual World Cafe. There is no way to effectively arrange for breakout sessions excluding community members who are not actively engaged in the process. World Cafe participants who, I'm lost. World Cafe participants who were not present on January thirty-first will be contacted to confirm their availability for February twenty-eighth. Those who are not available will be replaced with community members who submitted the original survey indicating their interest in the process. All World Cafe participants will receive documents to support the next phase of our work together prior to February twenty-eighth. They will receive a Zoom meeting link and secure password to enter the, the February twenty-eighth virtual meeting. The Ad-Hoc Committee will meet again to make final plans for the February twenty-eighth virtual World Cafe on February twenty-first at four-thirty prior to our next board meeting.
Thank you, trustee Bishop. It's obvious that you guys are putting a lot of time and energy into this and it's very much appreciated. Does anybody have questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee? Trustee Wallace?
Would you mind giving just a brief explanation on World Cafe for those who may still wonder what it is?
Sure. It's a, it's a process specific to the work that we're doing. It's a process that involves table groups. They're given important information, that documentation to support their conversation. They're given, for the purpose of our work at, on January thirty-first, they were given four open-ended questions, really discussion questions. They were asked to time themselves so that they didn't, you know, go over. We, they had one hour to consider those four questions based on some of the information that they were given. Each person had an opportunity to discuss each of the questions. And then for the last fifteen or twenty minutes of the meeting, each table reported out. There were seven tables of five. were seven tables of five, approximately five. We had a few people that were absent. And, and they also recorded their feedback on paper, which was collected. And so we're kind of gathering a lot of information.
Thanks. I think that's really helpful.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee? No? Thank you, guys, for all of your effort and energy. Item 9.01, the Board will acknowledge publicly heard comments from the last meeting. We thank Neil Brunel, Jenny Jarrett, Joanna Drescher, Karen Thomas Malloy, Christina Senori, Rachel Becker, Elizabeth Niesel, Cara Colivas, Pamela Pelzman, Harvey Boyer, Melissa Rabaffo, Janice Thierry, who read a statement from Katie Love-Joyce, Lindsay Shans, who read a statement from Daphne DeJesus, Josephine Malloy, and Lisa Treasure for their participation.
I think Cynthia Nitigan also spoke. She was, I checked, she's in the minutes for the last meeting, but it was down, there was a space between the other publicly heards and her, so I just wanted to make sure that we recognized her as well.
Yeah. And Karen Hinge, Inge, Inge as well. Publicly heard, do you have a, Amanda, do you have a sheet for publicly, did anyone sign up? Public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. The Board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the Board cannot engage in discussion or answer questions during publicly heard. Please be, please know that we hear you and take all of your comments into consideration. The Board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during publicly heard. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Be civil and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the Superintendent's attention in private. Ms. Pennelli?
I just wanted to thank all of you for entertaining. Both myself and my partner in crime, Simon Hallam, were both members of the Woodstock Fire Department. We wanted to come tonight to thank each of you for addressing the potential tax exemption for the volunteer firefighters and volunteer EMS personnel in the communities within the Ontiora School District. We are on the Recruit and Retention Committee at the Woodstock Fire Department and within the fire district. I can tell you all that recruitment and retention is a challenge for all of the communities within the school district. I'm, I'm, I'm a member of the Class of 92 from Ontiora. I'm 48 years old, and I am one of the younger folks in the district. Our firefighters and our EMS personnel are aging out, and we are not getting young folks to join our ranks. And without participation, we cannot service the community on any level. And so anything that we can do to potentially incentivize or encourage people to participate, it not only helps our community, but within the school district and the taxpayer base in all of our small towns, but it also promotes within our families a better sense of pride taking part in our community. So I think it's bigger than a tax exemption. It's more about restoring some of our community after COVID. We got so disconnected from each other, and COVID drew a lot of, drove a lot of people out of EMS and out of the front lines because it was dangerous and people were afraid of it. And we're seeing the effects of that. Far-reaching, you all see it in the classroom every day. But we are needing to work with all of you to get younger folks participating and to retain the folks that come in very excited and then realize, oh, my God, to be an EMT, it's 200 hours of classroom work, and then it's all the extra ride time and duty time. I do 28 hours of overnight time a week. Plus, I run a business that's open seven days a week, but I do it because it's important and we need to foster that in our communities. And so anything that you guys can do at the school board level to help us, we want to participate with you. If we can work beyond the school taxes initiative, if we can work with you to introduce our young folks to the fire service or to, to what potential career options are open, please, we would love to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pennelli. Mr. Brunel?
Okay. We actually practiced that. I want to introduce my lady. I never introduce her. This is my lady Linda, my wife. Absolute joy to be with. Okay. Ultimately, the government is going to tell you what you should teach our kids. And right now, they've got you teaching them that socialism is new and our system is old. So let's see if that's true or not. There's a system that's been around for hundreds of thousands of years. And every time a con artist gets caught in what they're doing, they will change the game just a little, and then they will, they will change the entire name. So you think it's something different. So let me see, not that yet, that baby. So let's see about, this is, this is the con game that they've been running for thousands of years. This person up here holds all the power. He's got a person next to him that holds quite a bit of power. And then they've got all sorts of people here, which make up the 1%. And that 1% winds up controlling all of the people down here. I just told you that she was doing terrific and, thanks, baby. And with this system, over thousands of years, this has happened to the people. They absolutely went out and just slaughtered them just because they could. So now, what did they call these systems? Well, it started out calling them dictatorships, monarchies, fascism. If you look at the system, even though they're tweaked, they're the same. Communism, socialism. And one that really caught my eye was progressivism, because when they used that one, I'm like, what is progressivism? And I found out that it was just another form of this. And liberalism. What else you got? Okay. So then, approximately 100 and 247 years ago, some dreamers got together. And one of them, I believe, was 18 years old when they signed the Declaration of Independence. And they decided they were going to come up with a new system. So they put the guy at the top and gave him very little power. They put somebody next to him that had no power whatsoever. They then gave us the House, they gave us the Senate, they gave us the courts. Well, when they did that, they decided each one of them would have separate powers, knowing that all of them would fight, because that's exactly what all they did. They just fought all over the place. And, but because they're fighting, can I have the, right here, that's no problem. So all these people down here, because they're fighting and they have a constitutional, constitutional representative republic, is brand new. It's only 100, 247 years old. And you're teaching our kids that this system over here is, is the new one. Please start teaching them the truth. They need to live a free life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunel. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who did not sign up tonight? Okay, we're going to just take a quick, very quick break, and we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, item 12.01, approve the tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. I'm not going to read this because we all had an opportunity to read it. May I have it first, please? Trustee Ramondo, second, Trustee Story. Questions or comments? Trustee Wallace?
So I just want to say that as a proud member of Fire Company 2 in the Woodstock Fire Department, I am recusing myself from this vote because it affects me, but I think it's great work that the folks in the fire department do on a daily basis. I want to thank the members who are here for their service and dedication. I have witnessed firsthand the work that fire, our fire service does, and especially our EMT. I get the alerts, and I'm always like, just amazed about the work that they do. And I just want to say that I'm so supportive of this, this vote, and I would be, I would be voting yes if I, if I could, but I can't. So I just want to say how proud I am of the folks like you who are doing such great work for the community.
Thank you, Trustee Wallace. I always appreciate an explanation when a trustee is going to recuse themselves. And I would just use this opportunity to do a quick PSA about affordable housing. Communities are not possible. In our communities particularly, without volunteer firefighters and EMTs. And unless we do something, and I don't mean we, but the community we, unless we address the affordable housing issue, we are not going to have housing for the volunteers that we desperately need. This is a very small thing that we can do for our community, but as a community, we must come together and figure out affordable housings for our small mountain towns. It's just not possible for us to afford the incredible amount of work that they do for free. Does anybody else have something to say?
Yeah, I'll just do a shout out also and gratitude to the fire departments and all of our emergency service people. I happen to live on a really small dead-end road and out in Hurley, West Hurley area. And every single time the wind blows, it feels like I lose my power because trees fall on the wires. And the, and several times, we've had live wires down. And also, twice, my fence has gone on fire because live wires fell on them. And I'm not kidding, I've had to call the fire department three times just because of wires coming down in windstorms. And I don't know what I would do without the fire department, honestly. And I guess I should have a shout out also to improved infrastructure, which is another, another issue that would be a big, a big support to our area. But thank you so much. Thank you all, and thank you, David, too, for your service.
Anyone else? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you guys for coming out tonight. We always really appreciate hearing support for the work that we're doing to try to make a difference. Item 13.01, the consent agenda. The board hereby approves item numbers 13. What, I missed one?
1202 and 1203.
Oh, I missed two? That's surprising. It never happens. Oh, okay. Item 12.02. We're going to discuss the creation of a hold harmless resolution for grading related to the region's exams. Who would like to start the discussion? Trustee Story?
I brought this up because in years past, I was under the impression that our district had one of these in effect prior to COVID. And I turned around and found out that we only had a hold harmless policy. Or not policy, because we do not have a policy for this thing. That this was only for COVID. However, for the past at least 20 years, SED has stated that they suggest districts not use regents in a student's final score. We got an email yesterday with some information from our high school principal. And we could see how many students it turned around and affected their scores. And it brought, most of them were brought down or stayed neutral by using the region's scores. When we have exams, if we're talking about that, you know, one of the concerns was that, you know, students would have to take an extra exam because a regent sometimes is used as their final exam. But just because a student, we can also take exams, they don't have to be, finals do not have to be a whole year thing. It can be just a quarter. They can test on a quarter. I know I've sat at this table and have had every single assistant superintendent of curriculum instructions say, in order to assess a student, you don't need a hundred question exam. You can do something within eight to 10 questions, eight to 10 well-written questions you can understand. If this is, this is hurting more of our students than it's not, so.
Would anyone else like to comment? Trustee Wallace?
I agree with Val. She's got, she's hit it right on the head. And my kid admittedly is not a great test taker. It's not his strength. And, I mean, on standardized tests, and I think that we need to think carefully about this.
Anyone else?
I think that it's a deeper conversation. And I think that regents exams are a graduation requirement for students, really all students unless they are unable to take a regent's exam and are taking life skills classes or, I forget now what the assessment is called. The alternative assessment, right. So, I don't know how much the regent's exam scores should be, you know, weighted toward a grade, toward a final grade or if they should. But I do think that it would be of value for us to hear what the high school administration and the department heads have to say in terms of what they can offer to us to assure us that students are not going to be harmed by using the regents exams as part of the final grade. It's a small percentage, but it is a percentage. I was interested to see what Mr. Edelman said about how they take the scale scores and make them, you know, into, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I forgot to pull it up on my computer, into percentage scores. I would hate for us to make a decision that confuses our students by having them believe that the regents exams are not important. And I do think that because there are certain courses that are, that the end result is a regent's exam. And if we're not going to use those exams and there is a final, then they could potentially have to take two finals. And students whose IEPs require extended time, some of them extended time 2.0, which means twice as much time, could technically be sitting for 12 hours of final exams per course. So, in addition to that, I know students who have sat for regents exams two, three, maybe even four times before they passed it. And I know that that sounds terrible. It felt terrible. But they persevered, they did it. It meant a lot to them to be able to achieve a score that could earn them a regent's diploma. So, I just want us to take all those things into consideration as we make a decision on a resolution.
Anyone else? Trustee Lynch?
I just wanted to recognize and thank Mr. Edelman and his team for helping us put together. I have the memo in front of me and I just want to second what you said Cindy. It is a complex issue. And so while I empathize, I thought it was interesting to see that the recommendation from the administration was that this in turn could actually mean that these students are taking more tests because they do believe a final assessment is necessary of some kind. And that the regent's exam is 15% of the grade while those quarter exams are actually 20%. So, they are looking at the more, the quarterly assessments contributing more to that overall grade. So, I thought that both of those points were worth highlighting. And again, just want to thank the administration for walking us through a complex question.
Trustee Wallace?
Do, and we have the flexibility to weight the regents for a final grade for any percentage. Is that right?
That's the teacher.
Teacher, well, would a sort of happy medium or a less, you know, something that bridges the gap be lowering the percentage that the regent counts to, let's say, 5% or half of what exists currently? And having like lowering it maybe by half?
So, I think that the recommendation that Principal Edelman made was to allow him the time to work with his team to come up with potential solutions. They recognize the problem that trustee Story has identified. They see and understand, you know, why we would consider such a resolution. And they see and understand why Kingston did it, but also pointed out the vast differences between the two districts. I think that it makes a lot of sense for us to let Principal Edelman and his team do their work and then see what solutions they suggest. Because, you know, they are looking at, superficially, this problem, potential problem, seems very simple. It seemed very simple to me the first time that trustee Story brought it to the table. It was like, yeah, you know, this should not impact our students in a negative way, especially if they are able to pass the regents and perhaps have done better in their classes than the regent's score would show. But in hearing from Principal Edelman, I understand that it's a much more complex issue than I initially thought. So personally, I would like some time to see what they come up with and with the hope that they're really hearing us and that they understand that this is something that we would like to see addressed. So, I'm curious how my colleagues feel. Trustee Ramondo?
I would agree to give them time, but could we set a timeline and a end date to get to report back to us possibly?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, I think it's reasonable for us to say that we would like to revisit this and to give him and his team time to get that done. Ms. Laffin, what do you think is appropriate in terms of how much time do you think that they need?
It's a little hard to answer that without, you know, really speaking to Principal Edelman. But I think it might be fair for us to, perhaps you would consider kind of updates as we come along, if there's any changes or perhaps it's something that could be included as an update to the topic on the agenda as they have time to meet and consider.
Trustee Story?
I also want to remind that grading, that is a policy that is in the board's purview to do it. I'm happy to get feedback from the administration and how that, but ultimately, it's the board's decision on what we do.
Yeah, no, I definitely understand that. And I'm sure that Principal Edelman understands that as well and is asking us to slow down a little bit and just give him some time. So, in hearing what Ms. Laffin is saying and also hearing what you're saying trustee Story, I think that we can, it's February. I think that we could reasonably ask for an update in six weeks, eight weeks, what do you, four weeks?
I would think, like, the reason I'm thinking that a month is if a decision is changed and it's really coming, you know, the last quarter of the year, then maybe we, there maybe have to be adjustments that students have to make, you know, or think about. So, I would say like a month would be a reasonable period of time.
Right, it's unclear to me and I think that we need to, I think that we each need to do a little bit of research and we need to get some more information from the high school team. It's unclear to me whether or not this is something that can be changed for this year. So, I think we might be looking at.
I know there are schools on Long Island that are doing their board resolution right now. And this is a big thing that has been coming up, not locally here, but around the state. Has been a big discussion of removing that. And I know schools are doing that currently right now. So, we can do it. Last year, we had to do it. When the state came down and, or was it two years ago? Whenever COVID was, we had to remove the regents part of the thing. So, it can be done in the middle of the year.
Trustee Bishop?
I think we need to take into consideration that this school year, teachers who are teaching regents level courses have been teaching to prepare their students for a regent's exam. If, which they'll have to take regardless. They'll have to take the regent's exam. And then for the teachers now to go back and create a test after the teaching is done, you know, like they've taught half a year now, maybe a little more than a half a year. They would be creating a test. It's just not, that's just not how it's done. I mean, I think that tests are created and then the course is taught, not the other way around. So, I mean, it's not that it can't be done. I'm just saying, those teachers are teaching to prepare their students for the content that would typically be on a regent's exam so that they do well and they're prepared for the next course. I don't know if it's possible for them now midway through the year to develop a final exam and prepare their students for a final and a regents.
Again, a final exam does not have to be the whole year curriculum. It can be only the quarter. It could be a certain thing. The final exam has a broad thing. No matter what, kids are still going to have to take these regents tests. I'd rather them do better on our school-based exams that our teachers are doing because regents are not made up by our local teachers. They are made up by, are they Pearson, whatever company now that has got the contract. So, there are times that our teacher may have not taught the whole regent's curriculum because of snow days or whatnot. So, that puts our students at a disadvantage against other students in a district that was able to get the whole curriculum. Why are we holding back against the students, you know, that the teachers aren't doing the test? They have no chance to do, to create any kind of regents. We're testing the stuff that our teachers teach our kids.
Superintendent McLaren would like to speak and trustee Bishop would like to speak.
I just wanted to say I agree. It's a really complex issue. And I appreciate the fact that the board is willing to hear from the building leadership team and Principal Edelman. And then, you know, I think if we have certainly a check-in, if not a formal recommendation or response within a month, I think that's certainly reasonable.
Trustee Bishop?
Yeah, I just wanted to also add that regents exams, like the New York State ELA and math assessments for grades three through eight are used by state ed to rate us and rank us in terms of subcategories such as race, ethnicity, socioeconomic level, need for English as another language support and things like that. Again, I can't stress enough, I guess, that I feel like the regents exams are of great value. I know how hard they are. I understand how difficult they are for kids. And I do hope that we can come to terms with that, you know, as we consider all the reasons why these high stakes tests are given to kids in the high school.
I mean, I think that's, you know, I think that's really the issue here is that New York does not allow for, does not allow for another option, really. The students have to take the regents in order to graduate with a regent's diploma. And New York is one of the states that insists on high stakes testing. So, I think that there are a lot of people who have a lot of opinions about that, that NISA does not seem interested in hearing. And that's really unfortunate. And as, you know, in my, in the way I look at it, I would love to see some of this energy go towards advocacy with NISA and looking at this issue as a larger issue that impacts a lot of our students, those with IEPs and those without. And whether or not high stakes testing in 2023 is really the way of the world and the way that we should be measuring not just our children's progression, but also the way that we're measuring metrics within our district, measures of success and measures of educator success. It seems a really outdated method that we are kind of unfortunately stuck with. So, in that sense, I think there is a, you know, a macro and a micro. And I would love to see the policy, the advocacy committee, you know, talk about doing some work around advocacy on this issue as a more macro topic. But from a micro perspective, I think that we can allow the building level team to provide us with preferably more than one solution. Because if we're just given a choice between a hold harmless resolution and one potential solution, I think that it might be more difficult. I'd love to see a couple of possible solutions that get us to an end result of essentially holding children harmless for what the region imposes on them.
I did just want to mention that in line with your thinking in terms of graduation should be looked at, Commissioner Rosa did create a blue ribbon commission. And they are considering reviews of what graduation measures really should be put in place. And so, at least there is some movement on that. I have not heard any indication that would lead me to believe that regents exams will go away. But at least there is some recognition that this topic needs to be reviewed at the state level.
Yeah, I mean, I think that for me, speaking for myself, Yeah, I mean, I think that for me, speaking for myself, one of the things that concerned me was that in the memo that Principal Edelman shared with us, there was a concern that if the Regents are not part of a year-end assessment, that students who could opt out and maybe didn't need that Regents to graduate would opt out and that that was somehow negative. And I understand now why that is a negative for the district, but I, it's very hard for me as a parent to understand why that's negative for a child to avoid taking a high-stakes test. So while I don't want to do anything that negatively impacts the district as a whole or an educator in the work that they are being assessed on, I also don't want to be in the position of putting children in the position where they have to take a test because it benefits an adult. So, you know, for me, that really is a very sticky wicket. I would not ask my child to take a test so that an adult can be measured and their success can be measured. That's just me. But I recognize that this is a much larger issue and that it's pretty complex. So I would like to give the principal and his team time to offer us potentially more than one solution on how we can address Trustee Story's concerns and the concerns that I think a couple of us have about how this impacts children and then make some decisions and hopefully that can happen in the next four weeks. Everyone comfortable with that? Trustee Wallace, did you have, Trustee Lynch? Okay, everybody's good? Okay, great, thank you. Item 12.03, discussion of the Olive Comprehensive Plan. I think more than that, we wanted to discuss a little bit the presentation that Liam Bertod had done because we told Liam that we would do that. And I think, well, let me open it up for discussion. Does anybody have comments? Trustee Story.
I love this presentation, but as I read it again, this is not board-level work. This is more of suggestions and stuff is superintendent and the administrative and students thing. That's what I, reading this, this is, you know, great ideas and would love to collaborate with him, but most of this stuff is day-to-day operations, superintendent and that type of work, not board.
Did you want to?
I did want to agree with Trustee Story. I think he's proposing two things, one of which is to create a survey of the middle and high school as part of his mentorship and I would say that that would be something that he should work through with the mentorship program and the administrators at the high school and the middle school because they would want to certainly have input and oversight of any survey that's going to go to all of our students at the middle high school. And the second, he's actually proposing that we do some things which we can look into, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure what specific items beyond that are really up for discussion.
I think there are actually three asks in here. The third, the third being, well, the second, the proposal that the school district considers implementing a Safe Roots to School program. So I would be interested in getting some information about that, so to see if it's something that we would support. I think that's a fair ask and not something necessarily that we would manage or control, but certainly something that we could offer support in asking the administration to do some research on, to find out if it is appropriate. The other schools that are mentioned here are not necessarily on a main road like 28 is. So, you know, I'm familiar with the other schools here and I think this program sounds terrific. I'm concerned because our main campus is on Route 28 and these other schools are not quite on the main highway the way that we are, but I would certainly be interested in getting some information from the Safe Roots to School program to see if they think that there's anything that they can do to support us. And I also think that his third ask, participating in a dialogue along with his mentor with the New York State DOT about what their plans are for the pedestrian pathway and to make suggestions how it can best serve the community of Ontario. I don't know what the board's role in that would be, but certainly I would support a conversation about the pedestrian pathway because we are looking at doing the work on the parks in conjunction with the town around the pathway. So I do think that there is a potential for collaboration there between the district and the DOT potentially or, you know, however this works. I don't think that it's up to us to tell Liam that he can have those conversations. I think that's between him and his mentor for sure and the district, but I would like to say that I am personally in support of anything that we can do to support Liam and his mentor in having these conversations because they only can benefit us.
Superintendent.
I'm sorry, I did have one other thing to add in terms of the Safe Roots to School program, we can certainly look into it. I do have a concern that it conflicts with something that was done by the board a number of years ago and approved by the voters. We created a school safety zone right around our campus in Boyceville because it is not safe for students to walk to school and the voters approved that creation of the safety zone and now, although as Ms. Leclaire indicated, we don't get a lot of transportation aid, but that transportation right around Boyceville, we are allowed to transport students there despite the fact that typically we do not transport within that mileage. We are allowed to and it is eligible for state aid because we had the voters approve that as a school safety zone. So I'm afraid there's kind of, there may be a conflict there between the two programs.
I mean, I guess along those lines, I would just bring up the thing that I bring up every year, which is that because that's a school safety zone, I would love to see us put something in place to ensure the safety of our runners who are utilizing Route 28 in order to get to the rail trail and it makes me incredibly anxious every year when I see them crossing back and forth after school. So given that that is a school safety zone with the potential of maybe asking Safe Roots to help us come up with a program to ensure the safety of our students as they are crossing to get to the rail trail, maybe that's a potential for collaboration. I don't want to do anything to discourage Liam because I think his presentation was terrific and I am very, very proud of him for feeling like he could come and speak to the board, so I want to make sure that we're very supportive in any way that we can be. And if those are the ways that we can support him, then I think that that's terrific. So why don't we agree to check back in with Liam in a couple of weeks and ask him if there's anything specifically that we can do to support him and if the superintendent can get us some information about Safe Roots to School and if that is a potential support for our runners who have to use 28 to get back and forth to the rail trail, that would be terrific. Anybody else? Everybody's comfortable with that? Okay. Now we can really go to item 13.01. The board hereby approves item numbers 13.02 to 13.08. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second, Trustee Story. Questions or comments? Trustee Bishop?
I reviewed the Schedule U and everything was in order.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, item 14.01, the board hereby approves item numbers 14.02 to 14.05. May I have a first, please? Trustee Armando, second, Trustee Bishop. Questions or comments? I think I would just confirm, the school that's in question here is the Stone Ridge Private School. Is that where the 14.02? The health services? It's Rondell, but it's for High Meadow? For High Meadow, okay. I just wanted to confirm that. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Second reading of Policy 4250, use of committees, motion to adopt Policy 4250. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second, Trustee Armando. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Do we have any other committee reports? Trustee Wallace for the Communication Committee?
Yeah, we met on, I believe, the first of February. We had a good session to look at specific language for potential surveys and talked also about the idea of outreach through opinion pieces in newspapers and it was something that we are moving forward with.
Terrific, thank you, Trustee Wallace. Does anyone else have anything to report? No? Okay. Old business, anyone? Trustee Story?
Okay, so we were trying to figure out the board tours and I think people were getting confused because what, the purpose of this board tour is for the board to go in and see our buildings when our students and our children and our adults are actually in building and working and we observe them. Each principal has their own routine, so it's imperative that we go during the day because this is our one chance to see the educational programming that we are making decisions on for. So it's not for right before the board meeting because SED requires the board to actually physically go to all of buildings, everybody. And we do, years ago, even prior to me being there, it was always given to the facilities committee that did that portion of the requirements from SED. So that, we go and we look at the buildings every year, we go, we travel around to them all during different facilities meetings. So that is, that obligation is done by the facilities committee, but this is for us to interact and see with the students. There are usually at least, I can recall up at the high school, middle schools, at least two or three periods that were there. So this isn't something that we should do in one day. And the reason I suggested us starting them now is because we can get them on the calendar for later on in the spring, so the board members have enough time in planning this so we can make our schedules around it. That's why, you know, that's what we have done in the past. So that's why, it was getting difficult to read emails going back and forth, so it was just easier to discuss this tonight.
No problem, I appreciate it. I mean, I guess what I would say is that our board is quite diverse in terms of who can be available during the day and who can't and some of us have flexibility and some of us don't. So if that is the intent of these visits, I would say that it will not be the entirety of the board who visits any school and that we all need to be comfortable with that and that the rest of the board will report back to board members who cannot be present because if it's during the day, I think that there's at least two or three of us who may not be available for all the meetings, you know, and there may be some that are easier for trustees to get to than others. So, you know, I think that trustees should feel free to go to the meetings that they can attend and that the rest of the board will report back. Trustee Bishop?
Yeah, I just wondered if in the past, did the whole board go or was it just a few trustees?
It was whoever wanted that could make it. When, there were times that we did have all seven of us there. There are also times that two of us could have been there. So there is a wide variety of anywhere in between.
Okay, perfect. So I think we'll leave it at that and if the board clerk could start scheduling those appointments, I don't think that you need to poll the board to see who can be available. I think that you can just maybe pick a date with each principal, you know, for a day that they feel comfortable with and then we will let you know who, yeah, after a spring break potentially and then we'll let you know who can be available. And then if we book those dates now, maybe more of us can actually be available.
Okay, that sounds good. If some of the principals don't want you there during the school day because it's disruptive, are we okay with not doing that or, either way? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, if it's, it needs to happen during the school day, so then that's just the way it's going to need to be.
You got it.
Does anybody have new business? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, apologies, this is still old business. I was just wanting to ask the superintendent about the update around the company that produced the vaping system and whether that was addressed or not. I remember, I think the last conversation we had about it was that we were waiting on them to come back and give us a sense of what was wrong with it.
I defer to Ms. Leclaire, she's organizing the...
I have another conversation with BBL on Thursday. Unfortunately, they are not having much luck getting ahold of Kamali who put in our vape sensors. I have kind of pushed them in my nice way. I may have to push them in my not-so-nice way next time. I try the honey approach, sometimes it doesn't always work, but yes, we are still on top of it. We're actually going to have an internal meeting as well just to kind of see if we can start looking at things internally as well.
Trustee Taylor.
Kind of on the same wavelength as that, there was two monitors hired, is that true? Did they start already? They started? And are they, like, what are their...
One started, one's starting next week.
Okay. And what are their responsibilities, like, are they only for the hallways or are they for other stuff?
I'd have to check with the principals and see where they've assigned them because they were moving staff around.
I'm just curious to see, because we don't have the monitors for the vaping system, ideally I would like more people hands-on or, you know, eyes-on to try and limit that.
I think that Trustee Taylor's point speaks to my old business, which would be kind of going back to our last meeting and touching on the obvious concern that parents are having regarding safety as a whole in the middle school, high school, and that would include vaping. And, you know, the first time I had heard that students weren't feeling safe in the bathrooms because of the vaping issue and potentially personal safety issues. So I'd like to just kind of kick that back to administration and ask if at our next meeting we can get an update about how you would like to start to address some of those concerns and what that looks like, whether it's discussion with the shared decision-making committee or where does that conversation start? Because I think that we all felt really concerned after hearing the parents speak at the last meeting and not just about moving the sixth graders, but obviously making sure that none of our students feel unsafe using a bathroom in any of our buildings for any reason. So if we could take a look at that at our next meeting and hear from you guys as to how you want to start that conversation or continue that conversation, that would be great. Anyone else? New business? Request for information from the superintendent. Valerie Story is the first to adjourn. Who would be like, who would like to be the second? Trustee Taylor? Any comments or questions? Oh, we did good, only five minutes behind schedule. All in favor? Thank you. favor? Thank you.